City Council meeting is called to order. Who wants to open the meeting with a prayer? Who's volunteering? I see Deacon, Deacon Rose?
As we talk Father Law, we come in now in the name of these God. This is the deal God that you have made. We show it yours to be there today. We thank God for this council being tonight. We ask him to touch you with heart in every mind that's sitting on the council. All God, whether he be in total agreement for the development of this city in the name of these. Lord, let your blood cover and Jesus lead.
Amen.
Thank you, Deacon. Alright.
Right, that's all.
Alright, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Councilwoman Rutledge Cheeseborough.
Here.
Councilman Freddie Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Lindsey Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Kim Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman De Archus Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Stephen Chisholm.
Present.
Oh, I'm here too. We have a full house. Alright. Everybody had a chance to look at their agenda?
Yes.
We are going to take off item A. Remove that from the agenda, item A. And then we'll renumber the other items accordingly. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the subtractions of item A.
I second.
We're probably move to second, discussion?
Do you want to, um, sorry, under the boards and commissions, um, I want to approve? I make motion to approve Judy Street for the Parks and Rec.
Oh, not yet. We're covered. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Okay, no presentations tonight? Oh, Officer Stinson. Come on, stand up. I want everybody to see it, one of our new police officers. Go to the podium. And tell everybody your life story. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Hi.
You just want everybody to know, this is Officer Stinson, she just started, how long you start? A week and a half ago?
A week.
A week ago? So she is one of our new police officers. Make sure you speak to her and be nice to her when you see her out there. Okay, got you. Since we're doing introductions, Sean Crenshaw, do you please stand up? This is, Sean Crenshaw is our new HR Director and Business Relations Executive. He is Inglewood born and raised, came back home so he can be part of the rebirth of this city. Okay, now he's not saying anything. We'll talk more about our new folks at the state of the city. Alright, um, so we got boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, consent agenda, well I hate those. Consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, so it's been properly moved to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Alright, passes. Boards and commissions?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, informations to approve the Judy Street for Parks and Rec Commission. You all should have received that email.
You have a second? I think we did get the application, I looked at it.
I second.
Okay, so we're properly moved to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Any other nominations?
I, yes, I do. I have one, Mr. Chair. Um, Ruthie Williams to continue to be on the election commission. Commissioner, I think hers is up twenty-two, twenty-four?
Twenty-two.
Next year?
Next year?
February, so can.
Now, I think we're premature then, right?
Also.
We do it, um.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, there it is.
Okay.
Elections Commission?
Yes.
Um, should we do it now? Or should we wait till it expires?
Sometimes we used to just do it, I mean however you guys want to do it, but.
Can we do it now? Okay, alright. So it's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Okay, also she wants to be on, do you have, does she have anything on file because she served boards before? Okay, commission on age?
She's on that.
I think she has to be re, maybe, I don't have the sheet in here.
It's not till March.
It's March of next year?
Yeah, February, March of next year.
Okay, so, because I don't have the sheet in here.
Yeah, we don't have a current sheet. We need an updated sheet.
Okay, yeah, we need it, we definitely do.
Okay.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, just while we on boards and commissions, I was gonna ask, because what I did in the past was I got, I touched base with the ZBA members and also planning, and I emailed that in so we could all be updated on the website and the packet. Well, that was the intent. If, uh, you know, all the different commissions you had contact with, or if you're on those, if you could just send those in, I guess, to the administration so we could start updating, um, like Councilwoman Richardson was saying, the packet and the websites, we could all be on one accord because the packet says something different than the website say than what we actually know.
Okay.
Yep, got a lot of updating to do. Oh, yeah.
We did? Oh, okay.
No, we're in approval, we just said we can wait. Is that up till March?
March, we can wait then?
Yeah, we can wait. Yep, so she's on the elections commission, we update. Any other nominations? Okay. We'll move on down to new business. So item A, it used to be item B. Discussion action, consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. The first parcel is located at the south side of Cherry Street between Kiwadin?
Kiwadin.
Kiwadin Street and Irene Street for fifteen hundred dollars. The second parcel is located on the east side of Kiwadin Street between Beach and Cherry Streets for another fifteen hundred dollars. A total of three thousand dollars.
Some of them, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item B, old item C. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the west side of Hickory Street between Beach and Cherry Street for one thousand dollars.
Some of them, Mr. Chair. Second.
It's been properly moved to second, discussion? Is this a lot, what is the size of this lot, what do we get? That's, that's not the one. Okay, okay. So this is a smaller lot though, I believe, right?
Right.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Item C, old item D. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the south side of Fernwood Street between Harrison Street and Eastern Street for fifteen hundred dollars.
Some of them, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item D, old item E. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on Williams Street, Williams, the west side of the street between Pine Street and Andover Street for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Some of them, Mr. Chair.
Second for discussion.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second, discussion?
I believe this is the documentation we've received, we were discussing orientation and just telling our colleagues more information so I just wanted to make sure it was satisfied or if we can dive further into it to get the clarity that was needed.
We got clarity on it, it is a thirty-five foot lot, which we usually sell for a thousand. I say the clarity was, it is a thirty-five foot lot, which we use, usually sell for a thousand dollars. This person is asking for it for seven fifty because he cut the tree down.
So do we want to stay consistent and sell it for a thousand dollars?
I say we do that.
You want to amend your motion?
Okay, I'm in my motion that, um, to have this gentleman pay a thousand dollars instead of seven fifty.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, passes. So that's our counter offer if he wants to do it. Okay, item E, old item F. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the north side of Notre Dame Street between Meadowdale Street and Beach Daily Street for fifteen hundred dollars. So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item F, old item G. Consider approval, consider approval, consider approval. To purchase one vacant parcel. Parcel is located on Inglewood Road on the west side of the street between Beach Street and Chestnut Street for four thousand eighty-two dollars.
I move for approval. Second.
It's been properly moved to second, discussion? And the reason why it's so much this lot is a commercial lot, so it's more than a vacant residential lot. Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Okay. Public participation. Ms. Peggy Bishop Lucas. Everyone has three minutes to speak. I'm doing public participation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City of Inglewood.
Good evening, evening.
I just wanted to come up and say how awesome it was and what a beautiful display of love that went forth for the kids which shop with a cop. It was absolutely awesome. This was my first time ever volunteering and man, I wanted to be a kid again. I mean, it started off with the mayor giving the keys to the city and just the, the police escort to the store. Then the kids got to shop at Target and they ate before they shopped and then the skating party. I mean, it was just awesome. I just think it was a beautiful way to bridge the gap between law enforcement and the, the kids and the children. And I just wanted to thank everyone that took a part in that, it was beautiful. And I also wanted to thank everybody for their ads with, um, the chamber, the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce. We are doing our annual Christmas, not Christmas, our yearly calendar. And if anyone still would like to put an ad in, there is still time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Melvin Gatewood.
Again, good evening.
Good evening.
We were talking last time about the property on Beach, Beach Daily there. We were, we were notified earlier, we didn't have the information with us at the time, that the property was only valued at ninety, at thirty thousand and it was nineteen-five for special projects. And so we're still holding at our seven thousand and we're open to, we, we need it. We, again, what we do is free, all the money that we spend comes out of our own personal pockets. We don't, you know, we don't, we don't have anybody come and giving us money or anything. And all, everything that we give, people give to us. And so we just, we, we need a location. We had, we, again, we were in two different places here in the city. And in both times, the Invictus Building, they had the plumbing problem with the water busting. And so they asked us to leave there, then we were also across the street from the, uh, the, oh, Stardust. And I guess they lost the building or something there and so we were asked to leave. So again, what we do is free, we're not selling anything. And so we need to be able to negotiate some kind of way to have a, because what we do is for the city. You know, we, we give to everyone in the city and we give it freely. We don't ask anything in return. Whatever people give to us, we give back to the community. And so we really are looking for that piece of property, which again, like I said, there's about a good twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of repairs that are needful in that building that we personally will do out of our own pockets, you know, once we receive the, the okay for the building, for the property, so.
Mr. Gatewood, have you, you made an offer to the city, but did you put down the earnest money deposit?
Well, we were, we, we had to pay for work, we were gonna put down the money, but, you know, things got kind of turned around. We don't have a problem with, with putting down the money, we have it, you know, so we don't have a problem there, we just.
As soon as you put down the money, then we'll put it on the agenda and vote on it, one way or the other. So we're just waiting for you to put down the, the earnest money deposit and then we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, so we can't do anything with it today? I mean, like I say, I can go in my pocket and give you the money now if you like.
No, don't give me the money. Mr. Dowdell?
Yeah, we keep.
I saw Derek, is Derek still here?
You've been there four meetings asking this and y'all constantly shoot them off.
Man, 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 you're out of order. If, if you want to speak, you should turn in a card and you can come up and have three minutes. Otherwise, we don't, we're not gonna have the outbursts from the audience. Is Derek Dowdell here? I saw him earlier, did he? He might, he might be here, you can talk to Mr. Dowdell, that's who you need to see to make the deposit, the check, give the check to. But he, he was here doing orientation, so as soon as he comes back in, I'll make sure he talks to you, okay? Alright, thank you. Elizabeth Anderson.
Can I Facebook this life? Of course I can. First of all, congratulations to all the women and men of character and integrity that got elected. As far as the, first of all, Mayor, I voted for you. And if you're a true man of integrity, your first job is to get him out of there. Chisholm didn't do nothing for my community when he was our councilman. My next order of business is, the police came to my house after I was assaulted by my neighbor. The chief covered it up. Commander Varga, I got videotape that I've sent to everyone in every city that I know. When I leave here, I'm calling, uh, the state police because it's a cover-up. See, that chief is under the old mayor of it's okay to lie and hide. I got videos, I got phone call where that officer entered my home at three o'clock and lied and said he was another officer. But see, unlike anybody else in our neighborhood, my cameras are inside and out. He said Officer Lebo is the only female. So if nobody can identify this officer, just like you introduced her, I know you knew these new officers hitting the street. So since nobody seemed to know who he is, I need to file a police report with the state of police and Dana Nessel to come in here and clean up this police park. Second of all, your water department man, before you took spot, the other mayor said, I came to council and asked, what's going on with the water in, in Inglewood? I'm paying these ridiculous sewer fees and water bills, but yet I spent a hundred dollars on water. He claimed he gonna send somebody out to check the water. But see, unfortunately for him, I love to read and research. And guess what? The state won't give grants for these Wayne students to pass out these filters unless it's been proven to be lead in this water. That's why Johnny can't read. Now, when somebody like me come to council, I'm angry because I've been lied to, I've been harassed. You've been, just another thing, federal law says y'all supposed to make these meetings where people, I were hearing aids, but y'all talk soft. To me, when somebody talks soft, they trying to run game. You're supposed to have a sign interpreter and make these, these meetings disability friendly. I've been watching all y'all say yea and nay, he ain't opened his mouth. He ain't said yea or nay.
He's not on City Council?
Uh, uh, this is my time, you told me I'm out of order, now you out of order. This is my time to speak. I'm fed up with all my people. As a nurse, I watch my people die of lack of knowledge and I fought to save people during this pandemic. Everybody, all black people in the city need to wake up and stop voting for these so-called black officials to sell out. Yes, I'm angry and I'm mad, can you tell me what them flags are in my neighborhood? No, you can't.
Would you like me to speak now, man, since you've addressed me?
I'm talking.
Well, go ahead and talk then, don't address me.
Okay, because you know all you good for pancake dinners. I got my time. Tell me why, guess what, they don't give out money to pass out water filters unless they can prove what these grants are for. Y'all lying to the city of these people that, what about this lead in this water? I do research. Yes, I'm angry, I'm angry that that, your chief, he's under the old administration. Cover up and lie, but Mayor, if I come to your office and sit with lunch and see you, he's removed, why ain't he here? Ain't nothing going on in the city, what, Christmas parties? Whatever. You need to tell me who this officer who entered my house October second at three AM is. Just like you introduced her, tell me who this officer is. Because he claimed he don't know, Commander Varga don't know, oh, and by the way, they sent the sergeant out. When I asked for one, they said it wasn't there and he came out, but he never spoke to me. I need to know who this man is.
Ms. Anderson, this is the first time I've hearing of this?
That's not an excuse, sir, you are the mayor.
I'm, I'm serious.
I understand you're new, but I'm telling you, the lying and the scheming has got to stop.
I understand.
We as black people need to stop voting for y'all black folks just because y'all black and y'all not doing right.
Alright, Ms. Anderson.
We got to, we got to say, our children are out here dying. It's about to be summertime and you got cops identifying using wrong names. And I'm telling, no, I'm pissed.
Ms. Anderson.
You want to call me troublemaker? I'm not a troublemaker. Tell, ask him to show, to show me there's proof that there ain't no lead in my water.
Ms. Anderson, your three minutes is up, so we have to move on to the next speaker.
I'll let you do.
I will look into it.
You don't want nobody to tell y'all the truth. But you need to unmute this officer to enter my home here, sir, just like you introduced her. I got his picture on both of my camera, who is he?
Ms. Anderson. Will, I will look into it, you send me the pictures, I'll look.
That's what the last mayor said.
I can't tell you.
He was stealing money from the dispensaries.
Maya Roots.
Listen, I voted for you because you're the lesser of two evils. First thing you need to do as a man of integrity is remove him. Because guess what, I don't want him as a mayor. If you die, he didn't do nothing for our district then.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Y'all got the roads smooth to the dispensary. I'm tired of fixing my car because these streets are jacked up.
Ms. Anderson, please, please, please calm down.
I'm not stepping nowhere, arrest me. I just have public thing, I, my business are up, arrest me.
Don't worry about it, don't worry. We gonna move on, we gonna move forward. We gonna move forward. Maya?
Oh, she put a ticket on my parking key. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
City of Inglewood, good evening, audience. I come before you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
My name is Maya Roots, I'm the Special Project Manager for Department of Public Services. And I come to you right now on a good note. We were awarded from the American Public Works Association, um, Project of the Year for the Eastern Outfalls that's located near John Dayton, Meadowdale, um, that window over here with the construction. They, um, they gave eighteen, there were submitted eighteen projects and they picked eight. And the City of Inglewood was one of them and we were awarded.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was nice.
Good news. Pastor Velma Jean Overman.
Well, good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So good to see everyone, so I am so excited. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Operation Refuge, we started our after-school programming and I am very excited to invite everyone out to make sure that your child is receiving the best educational services at no cost to you. There is no one that works in our program that does not have a grad degree or a PhD in their specialty. So this is a program that normally you would pay five hundred dollars if your child was at Kuman or any specialty program. This is after school, four to six, please enroll your children. I don't have to express how important it is for our children who had to deal with educating themselves virtually during COVID. So we want the opportunity for our children to catch up and to actually jump ahead of everyone else. So we have Zaba from Kid Chemists who actually runs a total chemistry program. We have math, we have science, arts and dance. Please make sure that you enroll your children. Now, how do you enroll your children? You simply call me, seven three four, seven zero nine, seven eight zero six. And your child will have the opportunity to become a part of Operation Refuge and our after-school boost program. Now, why do I have this big smile? We received the grant from Michigan After School Programming, so we are recognized by the state. So please get your babies, grades K through twelve, into this program. Thank you so very much.
Okay, Anthony Shirell.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, council members and new mayor.
How you doing?
I'm here to, um, not come and fuss and complain, but say thank you. You know, we are over in District One, Burton and Andover in that area. We had a problem with Parkside and Lamone where we had a lot of noise going on, I'm here to say it's quiet. We got a nice, quiet neighborhood. And one thing we learned is that, um, we just don't come to City Council to complain and fuss and argue. There's certain avenues that you can go through, certain people in different departments that you can go talk to. And if you don't get, you know, results there. Yeah, and if you don't get.
Of course, I said I'll be home tomorrow.
Yeah, if you don't get results there, well, maybe I should start over.
Ooh, okay, right.
Okay, what we learned is that, um, I got involved like a year ago. Coming to City Council, we found out that there's certain departments we can go to and talk to when we have issues in our neighborhood. Because too often we hear people come in, complain and scream and holler, but yet they haven't done any due diligence to say, hey, who do I talk to? Like Water Department or Police Department. We've been doing that and it's actually working, it's actually working. I've talked to Bibbins already about our street condition. And the officer I need to speak to today is about, uh, noise coming from some of these vehicles that have these loud mufflers on. And it's actually like one, two, three in the morning, it actually wakes you up. And when they hit them, I mean, they, they hit them hard going down the block, so you believe me, they going way more than twenty-five. And it's disturbing, so we have that little satellite precinct now on Pine. And I've addressed one of the offices there about it, but so far I haven't seen any results. So I'm just here to say, you know, try to help us out. And, uh, we also had questions on the speed bumps, we see that a lot of those have gone in. And everybody, of course, wants someone in their block. We know that, we know that. But hopefully, uh, in the future, you know, you guys can look into it some more when money is available. Because we understand it, it takes money. All this stuff takes money and we got a limited budget, you know, so. Anyway, want to thank you and hope you can address those issues for us.
Appreciate it, thanks, Anthony. This is normally the part of the meeting where the city clerk gives remarks. After the last meeting, the city clerk resigns, so right now we do not have a city clerk. The job has been posted and the closing date is Thursday, I believe, the twenty-first. So if you know anybody who's qualified, please have them apply in the next couple of days, we'll be starting looking through those soon. Or after the holiday, we'll be starting to look through the resumes and decide who we want to interview and how we want to move forward, okay? City Treasurer.
Uh, just the deficit elimination plan was filed and approved, so we got that all squared away.
And you can thank him for all the tax bills going out, I got mine. Just remember his face when you get that bid, remember. Alright, Mayor and Council Communication. Councilwoman Rutledge Cheeseborough.
Um, I just wanted to wish our residents, um, a very Merry Christmas. And I wish you all happy holidays, your family, um, Christmas is a time for us to be with family and just be a blessing to somebody else. So if you can do that, you know, help somebody, be a blessing if you can. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Bishop.
Uh, just, uh, piggyback on that, Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, hope you all enjoy the time with your family and, uh, it's time to spread love and give love. it's time to spread love and give love, so. Everybody be blessed.
Councilwoman Scott.
Yes, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Councilwoman Howard.
I'm the same, but, um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and please be safe and have fun, have fun and we'll see you next year. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
She's the youngest for last.
Yes. Um, just wishing everyone a safe, lasting, prosperous, um, holiday season. Just remember, we're here, it's another day, another year, you got another chance to do whatever you want for life, enjoy life and enjoy your family, because tomorrow's not promised.
Mayor Proton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, three things. Um, one was earlier during in-between orientation and general meeting, I was approaching and asking about flags going up and down the street. And they're talking about the little utility flags that mark off underground infrastructure, that doesn't just pertain to water, it could be electric. Any type of telecommunications line is buried. I attempted to explain, um, being that I had a background in telecommunications for twelve years, I already knew that it doesn't necessarily have to deal with the city, your neighbor could be putting the fence in, they have to contact Ms. Dig to put the flags out. It doesn't mean the city is coming to tear up anything, DTE is replacing lines at people's homes, the City of Inkster's doing seven percent, we'll, we'll lay a service lines. You're gonna see it, as Mr. Bivens said, for the next five plus years, this city's gonna be all tore up, so you're gonna see all types of things, whether, whether the flags are red for power, blue for water, yellow for gas, fiber optics, so on and so forth. That's what the flags conversations were about and then also about between Inkster Road and, uh, Beach Daily on Cherry Hill. Director Bivens, Maya's and the whole DPS Department did a whole presentation, talk about everything that's gonna happen in this city and that was included. So, um, things are being resurfaced at the rate that they can and with the monies that is available and we just ask that you be patient. I just wanted to address those publicly for those here in the audience and those in my district who might be listening as well. Because I do take things serious and the mayor told me to calm down, when it comes to being blamed and chastised about stuff that you have no idea what people are talking about. So I just wanted to make sure that you, I was thorough and transparent with you all, so that you know what was happening and go for it from there. Also, um, Mr. Johnson, Andre Johnson, that spoke about the church at thirty-two oh nine Williams, we know it's not in my district, but we know it's been there for years. Uh, was there any credence to him talking about it on the demolition list or are we looking at whoever owns it to do something with it?
Somebody owns it.
Okay, I was just curious, because he brought it up, so I just was asking. And then last but not least, we have a joker on council, if you will, jokester I should say, not joker, who likes, likes to hint at different people's ages and things of that nature. His birthday is coming up. And we won't be back until the new year. And that just happens to be the mayor, so I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday and for like, for him to divulge his age.
Oh, come on. Today, I'm fifty-four. But tomorrow, my wife always says I'm almost sixty, so she, she's rounding up way up, you know what I mean? I'm gonna catch you, I'm gonna catch.
Well, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, real quick, we have, uh, something's in the air today, we have a barricaded situation going on right now, so everybody be careful going home. It's, it's, has it been resolved? Good, okay. So everything has been resolved, that's why the police chief is not here and all officers have, have been spread out. Earlier today, Court Officer Bennett, which a lot of you know, because he works these council meetings, he was involved in a serious car accident. Um, so he was taken to the hospital, I have to get a follow-up on how he's doing. He's doing, he's okay? Okay. Doing good, okay, good, good, I was a little worried. He was T-boned at Inkster Road and Ford Road and, and the car looked pretty bad, definitely totaled. So I was a little worried. And also Officer Cleary, I think he was injured in this barricade situation, so keep him in your thoughts too, one of our young police officers. He was injured and he was taken to the hospital? He's good, okay, good, good. So, I've been sitting there worrying about that all meeting. Oh, met with Rashida Tlaib. Yeah, and I'm getting older, yeah. Uh, met with Rashida Tlaib and other mayors in the twelfth district today and council folks, had a good conversation. She said that the money for the senior wing has been freed up and released by the federal government, so we can move forward with that project. So that's a good thing, she will also be here tomorrow at, I think it's two-thirties? Two-thirty, if anybody on council wants to meet with her, uh, you're welcome to come to meet with us and talk about what we want in Inkster, some of the things we, we need from the federal government moving forward. So you're all are welcome, you're all to come. Here, in my office. Um, let's see, what else we got? Merry Christmas, everybody said Merry Christmas, happy holidays and be careful, again, the city's gonna shut down on Friday at noon and we'll reopen on January third, which will be our next city council meeting. So everybody be safe over the holidays and enjoy yourself, yes, ma'am?
The town hall.
Oh, town hall meeting. I'm gonna get you too. The town hall meeting notice was supposed to be in our water bills that we received this week. Remember what I told you, everything is Jerome Bivens' fault, everything that happened. But the town hall meeting will be January fourth, I think it's six-thirty, six-thirty, six o'clock at the rec center, but we will remind you and send stuff on social media, so make sure you let everybody know who wants to attend and let us know, tell us what they want us to know, all right? We're gonna, we're gonna get Jerome Bivens together though. Everybody enjoy yourselves, have a great Christmas and be safe. Moved the jar? Moved the second, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That's gotta be a record, thirty-eight minutes. That's pretty good.